Ready, right?
Ready.
Counsel. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Smithtown Planning Board is now in session. Would you join us in that pledge and just stand for a moment afterwards there in recognition of December the 7th? Thank you. Barbara?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you.
Right?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. The Planning Department would like to request that the following items on your agenda noted with an asterisk be adjourned this evening insofar as we have insufficient information for the board to take action on these matters. Moving on to part one of our agenda, these are zone change applications. Line number one, case number 2011-10, Anthony Leteri. Line two, case number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Line three, case number 2010-06, KVC Holdings, MLC Holdings, DWC Management and Limited Liability Corporation, and parentheses, Michael Cox. Line four, 2009-05, FB4 Realty, GMF Realty, and Townline Road Enterprises. Moving on to waiver requests, line eight, case number 773 Scholar Estates. Line nine, case number 922 Sesame Estates in Kings Park. Line 10, case number 1053 Burgess Estates in Kings Park. Line 11, case number 911A Glen Hill Northern in St. James. Line 12, 288 Olivia Estates in Birch Road. And then, on part three, letter of interpretation, line 13, Polish National Church in Comac. Mr. Chairman, that completes a request for adjournance this evening.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those applications to be adjourned? Hearing none, a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Our waiver request this evening under part two of our agendas. Before I pass out the maps, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note, I'm going to give you two maps, one for Prestige Estates and one for Soundview Estates. They are two subdivisions by the same developer in the same area. They're literally adjacent to each other, and they can, they have some of the same issues. So I thought the board would like to see both of them at the same time while we're, although we're going to hear Prestige Estates first and then Soundview Estates.
You want to share that with me? Or are you going to give me more? Okay.
On Prestige, I'm going to have to ask you to show.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, as I noted, the first case this evening is under line five, case number 1,059 Prestige Estates in Smithtown. This is a request to waive the requirements of sidewalks, street trees, and a boundary fence. And your packet is a memorandum dated today's date, December 7, 2011, and contains the summary of the issues with regard to this waiver. The applicant requests to waive the requirements of installing sidewalks, street trees, and the fence on the boundary line within the subdivision known as Prestige Estates, case number 1,059. The map of Prestige Estates, number 1,059, was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board on November 19, 2003. This application was approved for a five-lot subdivision fronting on Nadia Court. At that time, the board approved a performance bond estimate requiring the applicant to install a total of 1,581 linear feet of sidewalks and 45 street trees. The applicant has requested this waiver because there are no sidewalks in the area and there were ample trees saved. The applicant is also requesting to waive condition P of conditional approval, which states, and this is the quote from the condition, "The map filed shall show a five-four-foot-high vinyl-coated chain link fence along the boundary line of the county parkland and along the easement lines. A note shall also be added to the plan and restrictive covenant shall be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerks, which indicates that the property line owner shall not remove vegetation or place any accessory structures within any easement areas, and these areas shall remain in its natural state." The highway traffic, the highway engineering and traffic safety departments have no objection to the waiver request. The Planning Department performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and determined that there are no sidewalks or sidewalk issues in the immediate vicinity of the subdivision. Therefore, the Planning Department does not object to the applicant's request to waive the required sidewalks. Planning does object to the applicant's request to waive the required street trees insofar as it is at a subdivision design standard and there are no existing trees within the right-of-way that can be accepted in lieu of planting new trees. Since the entire subdivision is devoid of any street trees and all of the lots are heavily landscaped, the board may wish to consider the desires of the homeowners in the area. However, if the board wishes to consider waiving the street trees, Planning recommends that all of the required 45 street trees be planted within the scenic easement along Landing Avenue. When the map was approved, the board required a scenic easement area to remain in its natural state along Landing Avenue. The board also adopted the local waterfront revitalization conditions of approval, case number 3-11, that require that any remaining vegetation on the site, including existing vegetation within the right-of-way, shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Because of the configuration of the paved road, the town right-of-way is larger than normal in this area, you could see that on the map, and is currently cleared and devoid of any trees. There is ample room within this area for planting trees. The board may wish to examine this area when the members conduct an onsite inspection. As noted previously, the applicant is also requesting a waiver of the required fence along the scenic buffer area because the applicant claims the New York State DEC will not permit it. Planning contacted the New York State Department of Conservation to find out why they objected to the required fence. Apparently, there appears to be a miscommunication with the applicant in that the New York State DEC representative indicated that New York State DEC did not object to the fence, but they were concerned with preserving features of the buffer area. They offered to put their concerns in writing. However, at the time of the preparation of this memo, the Planning did not receive their letter. However, we did receive it, Mr. Chairman, and is attached to this memo. Planning believes that the scenic buffer should be delineated by fence. However, we would be open to other alternatives that would accomplish the same objective. The Planning Department recommends the board makes this application the subject of an onsite inspection. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our comments with regard to this matter.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Has the property been posted?
I'm waiting for it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I guess you've been provided with a survey of the area in question. I don't know if I understood Frank correctly, but working backwards, the request to remove or not be required to install a fence and put scenic easement signs, I don't know if you were objecting to that or not, Frank.
Well, we'd like to know what your proposal is. What was presented on your application, you stated in your application, or whoever filled out the application, that DEC objected to the fence that this board required, and DEC did not object to the fence.
You're right about that. It was a miscommunication. I'm going to hand up a picture, photograph of the type of indication of the scenic easement When the board does look at this property, and hopefully they will, this is one acre zone property that's now been built. I think there's one lot left. It's the type of property where there really shouldn't be any more fences in this particular area, specifically, if you have the survey before you, and I don't know if you have this... That survey indicates where we would put the notation scenic easement. That property, in any event, cannot be disturbed. That's all part of what my client agreed to in 2003. There was some discussion at the time with the former chairman, and, you know, we raised these questions, and Mr. Martin said, "Well, you can talk about it when it comes time to get off the bond." If you look at this property, there really is no reason to put a fence there, and sign indication is just as good because nobody can go into that property anyway. So when you see it and when you look at it, you'll see what I mean. Additionally, my client, I think it was three and a half acres that we donated that was taken off this subdivision to back up to the then-existing parkland, which was already there. Why we did that and why it was required, I don't know what, I don't know why we did it, but we did it. So there's an additional three and a half acres that we gave to the town without compensation. So, you know, when you talk about more street trees, I think that we probably did enough at the time. All we did was donate more property to be parkland, and I think there was, I don't know, Frank would know how many acres of that park exist before you get to the river. So it's a kind of a subdivision that I think the board should really look at and think about what you're requiring the developer to do. Obviously, the sidewalks don't go in that area at all. And again, the street trees, there's plenty of street trees along Landing Avenue where that survey indicates. So I don't know why we would have to plant 45 more street trees. At this point in time, it's well foliated, it's a beautiful subdivision, it's in the top echelon of our subdivisions in Smithtown, being one acre properties. All of the houses are probably a million and a half to $2 million dollars at least. So it's bad enough that the clients or the customers of Mr. Corridly can't even use that area, which we call the scenic easement, and they have to leave it in its natural state with weeds and all that kind of stuff, but we agreed to that. So we asked the board to look at this and consider our request. Frank is right, there was a miscommunication and a miswriting of the letter. If he was talking to George Lewis, I think his name is, Lewis said he didn't have an objection to that kind of, when I spoke to him, that kind of indication of the delineation of the boundary line, he never said he wouldn't permit it. I don't know why we wrote it the way we did. I signed it, I should have read it a little better before I signed it, so, but thank you.
Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on this application? Hearing none, is there a motion for an onsite?
In a matter of Prestige Estates, number 1,059, motion to adjourn for an onsite inspection.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. You're welcome.
Chairman, I'd like to move on to line six, case number 1,000A, Soundview Estates in Smithtown. As I noted, this is the subdivision by the same developer immediately adjacent to the previous proposal. The applicant's request to waive the installed sidewalks and street trees within the subdivision known as Soundview Estates, case number 1,000A. The map of Soundview Estates, case number 1,000A, was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board on May 1, 2002. The applicant was approved for a five-lot subdivision fronting on town line, on a road known as Landing Avenue, and on a proposed cul-de-sac to be noted as Nadia Court. At the time, the board approved the performance bond estimate requiring the applicant to install a total of 1,112 linear feet of sidewalks and 35 street trees along both sides of the proposed cul-de-sac. The applicant has stated on the waiver application that he's requesting the waiver because there are no sidewalks in the immediate vicinity of the subdivision and that ample trees have been saved. The highway traffic safety departments have no objection to the waiver request. The engineering department has no objection to the sidewalk waiver request. However, stated in their September 29, 2011 memorandum, we do object to the request to waive street trees. The Planning Department performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and determined that there are no sidewalks or sidewalk issues in the immediate vicinity of the subdivision. Therefore, the Planning Department does not object to the applicant's request to waive the required sidewalks. Planning does object to the applicant's request to waive the required street trees insofar as it is the standard design features of all subdivisions within the town. Since the entire subdivision is devoid of any trees and all of the lots are heavily landscaped, the board may also wish to consider the desire of homeowners in the area. However, if the board wishes to consider waiving the street trees, Planning recommends that all of the required 35 street trees be planted within the scenic easement along Landing Avenue on Lot 1. When the Planning Board approved the original map in 2001, 100-foot-wide scenic buffer to remain in its natural state was included in the rear yard of Lot Number 1. However, in February of 2008, the owner of Lot 1 requested that 100-foot buffer be modified. The buffer was reduced in the rear in exchange for a new buffer along Landing Avenue. There's a survey that's attached to this memo that you could examine. While the applicant replanted the area along Landing Avenue, as per the approval resolution, the scenic easement area could easily accommodate more trees. Planning would suggest that the board examine this area when they conduct an onsite inspection. The Planning Department recommends that the board make this application the subject of an onsite inspection. That concludes our comments with regard to this matter, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody here representing the applicant?
The affidavit I submitted to Frank contains an affidavit with respect to both subdivisions. Again, I guess the best way for the board to determine what to do is to do an onsite. We believe there's plenty of trees, especially along Landing Avenue, so we asked the board to look at it and consider it and look at the entire subdivision and...
How much would it cost to fight all these trees?
How much?
Yeah.
Well, I'll have to ask the client.
How much a tree? About... The bond calls up to... 125 a tree.
And that was 2,003, so...
I didn't hear the answer.
Mr. Corridly indicated it was 125 a tree. That bond, I think, was 2,003, so I'm guessing it's probably at least, I don't know, another 50 bucks a tree. So it'd be substantial.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you finish? Anybody here that wishes to speak on this application? Frank, I just have one question. Is there a standard sign that the conservation people put out there that's available?
There's one from DEC. We don't have one for the town.
Okay. Okay, nobody to speak on this, a motion add for an onsite.
Chairman, before we can... Wait a minute.
Why counsel corrects something? There was a technical problem with the notice. Okay?
Scribbled this over.
All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for an onsite.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to Soundview Estates, number 1,000A, I make a motion that we go on an onsite for this particular issue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. You want to keep one of these? Which one do you want to keep? What's that one, that, a Soundview or...?
Horse's one.
Take this one here, then. This is Prestige.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is line seven, case number 923, Village Woods at Midwood in Wisconsin, and this was a request to amend conditions of approval of the subdivision. Mr. Chairman, this matter was heard at the previous meeting and was the subject of an onsite inspection. It was my understanding that, I know several of the board members visited the site and the area, and I believe we have a resolution that contains what we think is the board's decision on this particular matter. I'd like to read that into the record. It's located on page two of the memorandum that's in your packet and reads as follows. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Mark and Elizabeth Dashill to waive the requirement of the conservation easement in order to maintain a staircase and fencing installed in a conservation easement on Lot Number 8 within the subdivision known as Village Woods at Midwood, case number 923, subject to the filing of a restrictive covenant that includes the following restrictions. One, the waiver approval by the Planning Board is for fencing shown along the property lines only and the existing staircase is shown on the survey prepared by T. Eason, land surveyor dated May 17, 2011. Two, no further encroachment shall be permitted within the scenic area. Three, the approval is for the existing structures, and any replacement or major reconstruction of these structures will require a new review and public hearing before the Planning Board. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Planning Department's recommendations with regard to this matter.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Hi. My first name is Elizabeth, and my last name is Dashill. I'm sorry?
Your name and address.
15 Cobblestone Court in Wisconsin. D is in David, A C H E L is in Larry. Now, I know I just heard the verdict and the whole nine yards, but I did prepare like a minute speech, and I'd just like to read it to go on the record. So, here you go. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board for their time and service while... Yes?
Close hearing.
Okay, that's fine.
Recommendation, I don't know what the chairman wants to do.
All right.
All right, so that's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Planning Director. Frank, I know that there's been encroachments, and that's the reason why that you mentioned that in the, that, you know, actually, they mentioned it in their letter. Is it against the regulations to put that fence that they have right on their property line to stop that?
What we are giving them permission is to, because that was silent in terms of the resolution, in terms of what the approval stated, in other words, putting the fence on the boundary lines. What we are doing is allowing that fence in its current condition and to leave that fence to remain. And if they decide to change the fencing or the stairway, they have to come back before this board.
Well, to some of the places, the fence isn't exactly on their line, so there's other neighbors' fences on their line where, you know, where they've encroached on their property, so...
Well, we're just talking about the scenic area.
Okay.
The fencing that's in the other areas, that's a private matter.
Oh, okay.
So the application is being, if we adopt this, is being granted with, subject to these conditions? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Frank, just in regards to number three, it brings up the matter of replacement or major reconstruction. How about, how are we going to handle any type of maintenance of the particular staircase? Do they have to come back before us for maintenance of this particular structure? Because it is, from what I recollect from the onsite, wood. So if there's a broken step, do they have to come back before us for that, or could they do maintenance?
I would define maintenance as exactly the way you just described it. And I believe the building official would require that as well. In other words, repointing of mortar or something like that is... However, if they have to replace the, or it's undermined and they have to pull the structure out and excavation has to occur, that's what we consider to be major construction.
Okay.
So what is, no alteration of the topography.
So they're permitted to do maintenance on this particular stairs?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board? Or motion for the approval of the request of, for the waiver of reconservation easement?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regards to Village Woods at Midwood, number 923, that we adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move on now to part four of our agenda. This is the adoption of the minutes of August 17, 2011, and October 19, 2011.
Everybody read the minutes? A motion?
Will do we adopt the minutes of August 17, 2011, and October 19, 2011?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Okay, just one last matter under correspondence, just to explain what's going on with the Polish National Church. We seem to be having some problems with determining the yield on the property from the Health Department. Apparently, there was a miscommunication between the applicant and the Health Department. There was a previous sterilization on this property, which we did take into consideration. And what has happened was, when the applicant submitted his paperwork to the Health Department, they submitted the wrong information. And now we have to do a major redesign, and it's going to take about 30 days. And by law, we're supposed, this board's supposed to act within a fixed period of time, and the applicant voluntarily has requested that we extend this matter so that we could clear up the technical problems that we have. Okay? That's all it is. And that's the only matter this evening, gentlemen, for the Planning Department.
All right, I just have one matter, and I spoke to Frank before about it, and I had spoken to counsel prior to this, and that is the map for Catherine Estate. The map there was originally drawn up in 2008, and one of the conditions on the... the conditions on the map was that there would be no abridgement there of the line of sight there to the, to the house in the back. And the motion that we did at the May meeting there that approved this application indicated that they wanted there to leave the garage where it was and just a three, a five-foot movement there to the east. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And that's acceptable from the standpoint there of not having to worry about the note that's on the plans that says that there'll be no obstruction there to the line of sight there to the house.
As I mentioned to you, Mr. Chairman, I think obstruction is a issue that is valutive or subjective by this Board. If the Board feels that the garage, and obviously, you must have, because you passed the resolution with it, the garage was shown on the map, and you did not ask for it to be removed, then you did not consider it to be an obstruction.
But we did ask for it to be moved over.
And it was. It was, you gave the specific, we did exactly, the applicant did exactly what was in the minutes. That's why we copied the minutes. You asked that the garage be moved over five feet, and we did move the garage over five, the proposed garage.
But would that cause a problem there for the applicant to be able there to proceed with his, with his plans there and not be concerned that if there was going to be, where he put the garage, that there was going to cause some problem there on the...
No, the applicant agreed to what this Board...
Move the garage.
To move the garage, and the garage was moved. The chairman and other members, I believe, discussed was whether the garage posed a contradiction to a previously stated standard. And my reading is that you determine what is an obstructive view and an unobstructive view, and if you already passed this with the condition to move the garage, that satisfied your own view of what obstructed means. At least, that's how I interpret it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clear up there, with there be no obstruction problem there with him to go ahead there with his application. With that there, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.